To the Clean City Commission meeting. Call to order. Roll call.
Chairperson Oberg.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Case.
Here.
Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Jocelyn.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First agenda item, approval of the minutes, consideration of the January eighteen twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes as written. Have a motion?
I make the motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out a request form in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request the matter be placed on the future agenda. We're going to move up. Where are we at here? I just got lost. Anyway, we're going to move one of the agenda items up to right now, and it's the community recognition program that we have, and I'd like Eric Fox to come up to the podium.
Yes, we'll also go down and.
Okay. Okay. Nice.
I have a nice little word for you, and I'll read them more to it. So City of Kingman and the Clean City Commission recognizes Eric Fox, appropriate position, for your outstanding efforts to improve the appearance of your program.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. That was very kind of you.
Let's get some pictures.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Where do you want me to stand? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
We love what we do, and I get tons of compliments, and it makes me feel.
Turn around. Look in the cam.
Okay. I'm standing right there. Do you two just?
Oh, sure. Hang on.
All right, you guys. There we go.
Can we get a picture?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Did you have the Kingman plaque in the background there?
I'm not sure. I've got a close-up. I think I did a close-up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and join if you're fine.
You're welcome.
Yes. Yeah, I'd love to.
Sneak out some more?
No, I'm good. I'd love to join and catch up.
And you met?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, number three, old business event calendar. Update from the Clean City Commission calendar of events. Discussion and possible action regarding any new or rescheduled events. And we always look to Kealan or Donna for that.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission. This item is a regular meeting agenda item so that any events that may arise can be scheduled to be discussed and participated, decided upon. Staff has asked that the commissioners look for events and activities that would benefit from Clean City Commission participation. Any additional events that the commissioners know of and which they would like to benefit from Clean City Commission participation can be discussed at this time. And I don't think that we have a lot of upcoming stuff, so we're certainly looking for some input from you guys on stuff that you might like to add. I do have an update regarding the cleanup from last weekend. So I think this was a collective effort, and I'll turn some time over to Marcia.
Yeah, I wanted.
As well, because this is a total number that Ed provided to the minor. It looks like we had just over a hundred and twenty-five volunteers total and over two hundred bags that were collected.
Right.
Yeah. And then if Marcia wants to tell us a little bit about her portion of that.
Our group was downtown on Beale Street. We did from Highway forty to First Street on both Beale and Andy Devine areas and gathered up trash. We had seventeen people volunteered, thirteen that showed up, and two that we kind of had just handing out bags and making sure everything else was going smoothly. So I think that we did pretty good in that area. Everybody stayed consistent, picking stuff up in the area and left it out to get picked up. And then I know that there was a couple of other organizations that picked up going down Beale Street and up on Grandview.
Good.
Any additional on cleanup day?
I know there's people from the Clean City Commission out there, but I was there out there early because I had another event to go to afterwards. I got out there early and got mine done so I could go do my other thing, but I did see the other ones arriving, so.
Appreciate it, Wayne. Thank you. Okay, anything else on the back?
I want to say thank you to a new resident in town named Mark. He joined us. He worked at Nucor, and he joined us, and that was fun getting to meet a new resident of Kingman. And also thanks to Robert being there for us with waters and bags and stuff. And thank you to Jenny.
Any additional?
And Janet.
Yeah. Thank you.
And on that, if we can get Mark's on the volunteer list, name, phone number, stuff like that.
I got his phone number.
Okay. Okay, moving down, item number B, Adopt a Block Program. Got an update on the Adopt a Block? That'll be from Randy.
So basically, the program's still there, and we still promote it mainly at the First Fridays, and we're looking forward to other events that we are invited to, to be able to do promotions there, you know? I know. Oh, our Adopt a Block. Oh, yeah, we do Adopt a Block with our church, you know, and that went really smooth, and we got, what, ten bags of trash between Northern and Gordon, and we had, I forget how many people, nine, I think, nine folks helping us out, and that was a good day cleanup. But anyway, we're looking for more opportunities, do First Fridays for promotion and stuff, but we need more events to promote at, so. I know we do the park every year with the expo. We do that, and we need, I guess, maybe some of the events. We need to be able to utilize the electronic billboard in some way to promote, help us promote, you know? Oh, Kiwanis, yeah, I got to speak at the Kiwanis and promote it there as well, and it was fun. But so I gave them the information. I don't think they asked for paperwork on it, but hopefully they would get involved. So just events like that and groups like that, so. Yeah, so that's where we're at with the Adopt a Block.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, item number four, reports. Item number B, recycling update. Kealan invited Wendy, and we're going to get a recycling update from Wendy. If you'd like to step up, Wendy?
Yep. Thank you, Chairperson and Vice Chair. So Wendy is going to do the heavy lifting and answer the questions that you guys had. Better call in the experts, right? So anyway, with that time, I'll turn over, or with that, I'll turn over the time to Wendy, who's the Assistant Financial Services Director.
Thank you.
All righty, well, thank you for having me here tonight. I don't think I've had the privilege to meet any of you, so I just want to start off by thanking you for all of your contributions to this commission, just hearing what you just recently did and all the time you dedicate to this. Truly appreciate it, so thank you all. So as Kealan stated, I'm Wendy Shear. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. I'm here tonight because I was asked to provide a quick, brief update on where we're at with considering a recycling option. This is going to be brief. I don't have a presentation prepared. We're very early in any processes, so this is just to kind of give you an idea of where we are at right now. So let's talk about some history. As you may be aware, the drop-off recycling program, originally it was seven locations. It was voted in twenty nineteen to reduce that down to one location, and then ultimately in twenty twenty, that program was eliminated altogether. And it was eliminated because of the high cost of providing that program. It was over three hundred thousand dollars per year to provide it, and it generated very little revenue, maybe ten thousand dollars at most annually. Additionally, that program relied heavily on the inmate labor program that was provided by the Department of Corrections, and that was eliminated in March of twenty twenty, which was a significant impact to this program. And ultimately, it made it no longer feasible to offer it because without the inmate labor, it was extremely, going to be extremely more expensive to provide. I think it's important to note, too, that those costs are from twenty twenty, so it'd be considerably more for that option today as costs have risen year over year. I'd also like to just point out that there was a solid waste customer survey that went out between November and December of twenty twenty, and in that survey, there were eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven customers that received it. They all had solid waste services, and about two thousand responded, so about seventeen percent response rate on that. And of those respondents, nearly fifty percent of them indicated that they either rarely used the drop-off service or they didn't use it at all. The remaining twenty-four percent said they used it monthly, and then twenty-six percent said weekly. So there was some interest, but not a lot in that. So where we're at right now is, the finance division is going through an update of the rate study that was completed in twenty twenty-one. So there was a solid waste financial planning and rate design study that was completed in twenty-one. It included a financial plan, a rate review, and also financial models that were to be used over the next five years to project revenues and expenditures. And the results of that rate study, we had rate increases that went into effect July of twenty twenty-one, and it's important to note that those rates did not include any costs for a recycling option. So the rates we have today do not have any leeway for a recycling option. So the finance division is now in the process of updating that rate study with current operating expenses and revenues to determine whether the revenues are going to be sufficient to cover the operating costs. And as part of that study, anticipating that there may be some interest in a recycling option, the finance division will be presenting a solid waste department report to the city council at the August sixth meeting, and in that report, there'll be a brief, a few slides on that recycling option. And at that point, we'd be looking for council direction. So that's where we're at right now. So with that, I can conclude and take any questions you may have. If you have tough ones, I am going to defer to the solid waste team. And Tina's also here. She's more familiar with the history, so if you have some tough questions, she can help, too.
Hi, Wendy. Thank you for coming tonight. I greatly appreciate it and the information you provided. I was the one that asked about the recycling program, and since that time, I actually seen a program on TV where they talked about the problems with recycling, that people don't separate the items properly, and that's where the cost comes in because it doesn't get separated at the facility properly, and so they just get rid of most of it. Also, it seems that most recycling programs where you leave it at the curb for the trucks to pick up and things like that just haven't been successful, in my opinion. So I'm wondering, is there an alternative ideas to recycling other than just that type of recycling? Like one of the towns I used to live in, they actually had kind of like a kiosk out in the grocery parking lot. You know, people would take their cans there, they would turn them in there, and then they'd take a receipt into the store, and then they would get paid for whatever they turned in. So that's what I'm also wondering is, are there other alternatives? Can we put out a bid for companies, you know, to say, hey, they'll come into our town, do recycling, so the city doesn't have to do it, but the city's making money, and the company that puts in a bid for it generates their own income? And I'd also like to ask everybody else here if you've got ideas that, you know, you could think of that would help to recycle, to pitch in, so.
Mr. Chairman. I know as a shopper on Amazon, I have a ton of Amazon boxes. Can we contact Amazon and maybe do a recycling program for just Amazon boxes and get those out of our landfill? Because think of the money it would save on both ends.
Absolutely. It's not a.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, and Tina's recollection's probably going to be better than mine, and I'm not trying to punt this over to Tina, but I think if memory serves me correctly, there was also an issue, Commissioner Case, with just no market for commodities back then, right? I think at one point, we were having a company truck the material over to Murph in Vegas, and even a majority of that product, I believe, was going, ended up back in the landfill. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, but we can, you know, certainly look at other options again. Like I say, it's been probably close to five years now since we did the original one, the original rate study?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, so not quite five years, but I think that was a large part of the problem as well.
Chairman.
The recycling program, from what I understand, was started in like two thousand and eight when we started collecting recyclables, and it expanded the pickup points, drop-off points. The problem, how I see it, we never purchased the equipment and stuff to be able to package that product so, to make it a sellable product so the people, if it was cardboard for the mill, to send a truck out to collect it. And I was told that Kingman has no place to store the stuff that's processed until we get enough to be able to sell it. I find that hard to believe. There's always a problem with the quality of the stuff that we're collecting because people throw the trash in there, and it's very easy. You not only destroy the one bin of stuff, but when you dump it in a truckload of stuff, there's stuff in there that just makes the whole load just trash, so it has to be looked at. We have, we depended on labor that was very unstable because it's only prisoners. We tried the curbside thing, but we never, we never had a way to process that stuff other than a prisoner picking up a piece of cardboard, carrying it over to the bin, drop it in a bin. That doesn't work. If we're going to do this, we need to do it as a business because the price fluctuates. I mean, just milk jugs, those have been over a dollar a pound, down to like a quarter a pound in the last year or so. So if you're going to do a program, number one, you got to have equipment of people. If you're going to have people, you still need equipment like conveyor belts and what have you to be able to process it without injuring the people, having to bend over and pick it up off the ground. So we worked at a program, but we never really had a program that was meant to make any money, so that means the people have to pay for it. So you got to make the money when it's there because it's not going to be there steadily all the time. It fluctuates, and there was problems back then with China and stuff like that. And another example of us sending our jobs overseas and stuff instead of processing their stuff here. Now, Donna and some of us went over to Sedona, small community, a small recycling facility. If they can do it there, there's no reason why we can't do it here and make some money, at least break even. If we break even, that's a great program. You know, if we make money, that much better. And this year, ADEQ actually had money for grants for recycling programs, and they have information, they do this thing with the hubs. You bring all your stuff in there from the outlying areas and do hubs in there. We just didn't do it, and then we want to blame it on multiple factors, which all have something to do with it, but unless we do a program like we're meaning to make money at it or break even. If we can save landfill space out there, that's making us money because that extends the life of the landfill out there. So, because when you close one down, you don't just close it down. It costs you millions of dollars to close it down and keep track of that stuff for years after you do that. So the longer we can extend the landfill by keeping that stuff out of it and at least do the ones that can make money. So, and we watch the thing, but you got to have the equipment. We can't do it like we did before and expect it to work, because it will not work. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hollins, I appreciate the comments, and I'll say this, I don't think, you know, any one of us here today or even back then will go as far as saying that we don't want to do it. I think it just comes down to, you know, what the desire of, you know, the commission is, and I'm hearing that, and then what the desire of council is, and we understand that, and then, you know, ultimately what the desire of the ratepayers are. I think, you know, if the ratepayers are willing to absorb that, and I don't know if Tina's glaring at me yet, but anyway, then I think, you know, we're certainly in.
Could we check and see if Sedona is doing a third party? Are they subbing it out or if it's in the city? I'd like to see that.
I know they've reduced, because they had trucks going out to different fiddies and stuff like that, and when the prices went down and stuff, they no longer did that, so they had to make their operations smaller and more efficient because, like I say, when the prices are down, you're not going to make any money. And I know at some point in time, cardboard got to like forty bucks a ton, so we collected the cardboard, hauled it down to Bulldog, and paid them seventy-five dollars a ton to take it.
And that is something else that I want to point out, and I'm not saying that we can't pave our own way, so to speak, but, you know, I still think that the market is such, at least locally, that you're not seeing any of the others, and take that for what it's worth, I'm just pitching it out there, that you're not seeing any of the other local trash hauling companies participate in a recycling program, or at least if it is, it's minimal, I think, but.
Just like on glass, glass recycling, there's really no money in that. That was like fifteen bucks a ton for clear and five bucks a ton for colored glass.
Yes, sir.
A grinder that breaks that stuff down to the level of sand is really not that expensive. And that could also be used as the alternate daily cover of the landfill out there if we didn't do anything else with it, but we could also use it for when we were building something and need sand, we can make our own with the glass. It's not that expensive for the machine to do it. It's not free, obviously, but it's not that expensive of a machine to do what we need to do with it.
And one other thing to check on, Republic, I mean, they're huge in the recycling, and they're fairly close. They're in Bullhead. I'm not sure if Bullhead has a recycling program or not, but maybe council's already looking into that or has looked into that, or Wendy or Tina, or, but maybe just something to look into, Republic.
That's a good point, Chairperson Oberg, and I think in twenty-one, we were, for a period of time, we were partnered with Republic, if memory serves me correctly. In fact, I think that we were actually using them to transport our recyclables to the Vegas Murph at one point, certainly.
I just think if we're going to ever have a program, that we need to do it like we mean to do it and do the best we can with it, make the money when it's there and lower it when it's not, you know? I understand all that. It's all cyclical, and not everything can be recycled, but there's many uses for cardboard other than just what we normally think of it, using it in permaculture, putting down, bury the stuff in the yards and make infiltration beds and stuff like that to recycle, but a lot of it, I think, is communication with the people to get them to use it. Because I know now, you go out there to the landfill, and they got a pile of refrigerators and scrap metal, and they're paying them to take that stuff when they could take it to the recycler and make money instead of paying money, so we need some communication with the people to let them know and try to get the ones who are willing to do those things of, that's the people you're looking for, the people that are willing to do it. The ones that ain't going to do it, they're not going to do it no matter what you do, so.
Yes, sir. Chairman Hollins, we'll certainly look into those.
And one last comment. I think if we're going to be successful in any type of recycling, I think we start small and maybe target cardboard, like Janet said. Mike made a comment where, and I know in other cities, they have, at the grocery stores, they have the big bins, cardboard only written all over it. People can dump their cardboard off there, a baler, I mean, it's not that costly to bail up cardboard and send it away, you know, but I think we. But I think if we started maybe with cardboard, that would even help.
Again, grants would be a place to look at, too.
Glass and cardboard.
So, I mean, like ADUQ have some, they didn't have grants for at least five years or so, so this has been the first year they've had them. Not a huge amount of money, but it's more than what we had, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so ultimately, it's got to come up to a vote and everything with the public, and you've got to put out the surveys again, right? Like, every five years, you put a survey for the public to see what, for everybody's input.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. So the way that, it's basically at the direction of the council. So when we take this to the council, we're hearing what you're saying, right, and such great ideas, actually, so it gives us some homework, for sure. When we take it to the council, the council will give us the direction at that time. Hey, can we look at some of the options that maybe the commission has brought forth and the city staff has brought forth? I know Councilwoman Staley is certainly a proponent of recycling, so we're aware that that's going to come up. And so then what will happen is, we will most likely, at the will of the council, send out another survey with maybe some different options. It will be at the direction of the council, and if it is a change in our level of service that's going to impact the rate payers' pockets, we definitely are going to want to send out a survey. So ultimately, it comes from the council, but that's how it would work.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Item number five, announcements by commission members. Limited to the announcements, availability of attendance. Anybody have any announcements they'd like to make?
I got one. In August 7th to the 9th, there is the 2024 Rural Policy Forum, and it's going to be in Clarkwood, Cottonwood area, and it's all about the rural communities and different programs that support things in there, recycling and water and WACOG and health and just a myriad of different policies that you talk about and in different groups and stuff like that. I enjoy going to them. I've been to two of them so far, so, and I'm looking forward to going to this one, and it's really got some good information for the communities that are rural like us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you get that information to Donna, and she could email everyone? Thank you. Any other announcements?
Is the e-waste drop-off is coming up?
27th.
At the 27th?
3700.
Yeah. Are you going to put that on the electronic billboards, maybe, and tell the public, that kind of thing? I wish we had some advantages, you know, with the Clean City Commission as far as in big ways. Kind of like, okay, one big way, and I know maybe we can't do this, but ban single-use plastic bags that are all over the landscape. So, I don't know. I think it's a law that we cannot ban plastic, communities aren't allowed to in Arizona. How can we change that? It just seems like, what? Anyway, paper would make so much more sense for our community. Another idea, yeah, what's that?
This is announcements, not ideas. Sorry. Sorry, Randy.
Well, I'd like to see it, how about, I'd like to see it on a future agenda.
Then get with Donna, and she'll put it on an agenda, yeah.
Yeah. That and the idea of maybe some decorative debris-catching fences where the box stores are, that, to stop the trash from going in all the fields and, and if we could get access to fields, maybe these things could be on future agendas. Was I premature in that? We didn't do the future agenda thing?
Yeah, this is announcements.
Oh, oh, no announcements.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
I got one I forgot. Just in the future, it looks like it'll be October timeframe when the county does another Free Trash Day, and I'm suspecting it'll be like the last one, or everybody, if you've got trash, you haul it out there to the dump and get in line and get it up. But that looks like it's going to be in October for the next one.
Okay. And I'll just make a quick announcement. Idea, so if you have an idea or an agenda item, or please email Donna, don't call, just email her, and then we'll discuss it at the agenda meeting, and we'll try and get it on the agenda. Some of the criteria you asked for was discussed at the agenda meeting, and will be discussed with you on an individual basis.
Okay, great.
So some of the things you just mentioned will be discussed with you on an individual basis from Kealan.
Yeah, and if I can interject, Chairperson Oberg, to that, you can also email me as well. I know Donna's busy, but feel free to reach out to me, and I'll certainly get back with you as well.
Yeah, and we welcome agenda items from all the commissioners so that we can sit down. We sit down, we have our agenda meeting and go through them, and some of the items, we will contact you individually, and some of them we'll put on the agenda, you know? Okay. Any other announcements?
We've started looking at planning the next Clean City event on September the 14th. We had a meeting earlier today to discuss that.
Okay.
Good thing this last one, just trying to do it twice a year.
Exactly. And again, let's get that over to Donna so we can get a date put on the calendar for I'm going to, I'm going to stretch this announcement a little bit. I did ask Donna also at our agenda meeting, and maybe since Tina's here, we have a city calendar, and I look at it religiously. I look at it every Thursday to see what's going on on the weekend and stuff. Never once have I've seen a city cleanup, and I know Day of Caring, they do a lot of stuff, we do a lot of stuff. It'd be nice to see something on that city calendar other than markets and farmers' markets and stuff. Let's throw a city cleanup. We get an extra 50 people that see that on the calendar and say, let's go to that. Anything else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Got it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. [applause]